Very good, very good.
It's easier to say this than it is.
Well, for, yeah, well, for character. See, that's nice, good.
I agree. I didn't probably know that.
Yeah, we put our lights up. You know, you're on, you know, with the middle light, it's like a lot of them. It's kind of like a best, you know, beach bar, and so, and so we're all right, it's like what they tell me. It's like, you know, every time that you run across the street, so. So, I think it varies depending on what's in front of you.
My family.
And, oh, yeah.
I don't know.
How hard are you?
I'm here for the process.
Talking on, right?
Do you think that? For a, uh, contract.
Yeah, and, um, and everything. Good. Right, right, right? Sometimes it's three, and then it gets, um, it doesn't work after the therapy, or, you know. To try it.
Oh, yeah.
Brighten the gears.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, I have like ten speed, one month.
That way through.
Yeah, one time.
Oh, you've been kind of there in that time. Maybe you have it.
Well, yes, yeah. Look at her. I'm only running, can you reach? I change your ears.
I mean, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah. There's a hill, um, across from us.
Actually, we're in a, I have a lot of.
Right, I don't like the dark, it, I, I don't, so there's, um, I love, I love.
Luckily, I'm not seeing much of it.
But I was like six, six.
Practical darkness, now you're, you're just.
I'm like, see you. Then whoever gets the chair, I'll have to.
Right. You're just holding hands, and you're on. Yeah, he's, he's playing up.
I'm taking it, he's being around.
I guess.
Uh, no.
You're all been, yeah. You're all been, yeah.
Okay.
Obviously, you're better than some other, in the other part, big guy.
I'm all right. I'm all right.
So, like, both of you. Yes.
I was just. Yeah, I did, I did. As a, as a.
Sure.
So, I, I go to, we've heard your ten years.
Probably gonna end, you know, I'm gonna have to stay out of this. Yeah, we can step out.
Uh-huh. Probably get better, she'll say, or, in the other part, big guy.
About three years, right back.
So, like, both of you.
Yes.
I was just. Yeah, I did, I did. Yeah, I did.
Sure.
So, I, I go to, we've heard your ten years.
Probably gonna end, you know, I'm gonna have to stay out of this. Yeah, we can step out.
Uh-huh. Probably, yeah. No, he would have issue, right? Yes. And it's no, it's no more. And, actually, either way.
I wouldn't have done, but, 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 uh, oh, that's not us.
Definitely not.
This is the count.
I think it's.
Totally, totally, yeah.
Okay.
I kept it on that. Yeah, man.
I mean, this is.
Good evening, and thank you for braving the cold weather, weather today. I'd like to welcome everybody to the January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, uh, meeting of the New Kent Planning Commission, New Kent County Planning Commission. If, uh, if you would please rise or stand as you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance and moment of silence. Please turn towards the flag and repeat as I say. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please take a seat. We will start off with our roll call. Ms. Berry, please.
Ms. Townsend.
Here.
Ms. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Moyer.
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Here.
Ms. Thomas. Mr. LaRochelle.
Here.
Dr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Davis.
Here.
Ms. Rose.
Here.
Ms. Reverend Hathaway.
Here.
Mr. Bennett.
Here, thank you very much. Um, before we go into the rest of the agenda, I'd like to introduce a couple of the newer members to the commission. We'll start on the front row here, it's Tammy Johnson, and I believe you're a Realtor and a good friend to Mr. Moyer, and what else is there about yourself?
I think you covered it. No, my name is Tammy Johnson, I'm happy to be here, I've been a, uh, let's see, a New Kent citizen for the last thirty-nine years of my life, and very glad to be part of the Planning Commission, and friends with John Moyer.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Dombrowski, if you could, I think you're from, what, District Three?
I'm from District Two, actually, with John as well, so, um, my name is Jacob Dombrowski, I'm a, uh, New Kent resident now for t- for ten years, um, I've operated New Kent Winery for ten years, and also on my own contracting business, um, I've got a love for New Kent County, my wife and I have four kids in the school district here, um, so I'm happy to represent the districts of, the District Two citizens, and also all citizens of New Kent County, um, creating this locality to be more of a comfortable place to live, reside, and do business, so, um, looking forward to, uh, being on the Planning Commission and promoting growth and, uh, a common sense approach to New Kent County. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And to my left is Reverend Hathaway, representing District Three.
District Three. Uh, I'm excited to be here again, uh, this is my second tenure on the Planning Commission as an ordained pastor, when you get invited back the second time, it's usually a chance to get, do what you didn't do the first time, uh, but I am excited to be here. My, I've lived in the county forty-seven years, and, uh, my family's here, my children have gone through the school system, I absolutely love New Kent, and if you haven't guessed it, I am the father of our county administration.
That's where you got a good look from. Thank you each, to each of you, and welcome to our commission, our small family here. The first action item on our agenda is the election of officers. I will turn the floor over to our county attorney, uh, Josh Everard, and we'll start with the position of Chair. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. So today's the organizational meeting, and the way that we will go about this is first, we will have, uh, nominees, so we will open the floor for any member to make a nomination for the position of Chairman, and then after all of the nominations have been made, we will close the, the floor for nominations, and then we will do a roll call vote. The first person who receives a majority of the entirety of the Planning Commission, so there's eleven of you, takes six votes, um, well, if there's abstentions, then a majority of the ones who do vote. Um, after that person does receive a majority of those voting, then we will close it, and I will turn over the floor to the newly elected chairman for them to run the remainder of the organization meeting. So with that being said, are there any nominations for the role of Chairman?
Uh, Mr. Everard, I have a, I move to nominate Mark Bennett as the twenty twenty-four Chair of the New Kent County Planning Commission.
Thank you, we have one nomination for Mark Bennett. Are there any others?
I move to close the nomination.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Nominations are closed, now we will move on to the election, we have one candidate, um.
I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to move, uh, move to elect Mark Bennett as the twenty twenty-four Chairman of the New Kent County Planning Commission.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. Ms. Berry, can you please take the role?
Mr. LaRochelle.
Aye.
Mr. Moyer.
Aye.
Ms. Rose.
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Ms. Townsend.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Reverend Hathaway.
Aye.
Ms. Thomas. Mr. Bennett.
Abstain.
Congratulations, Chairman Bennett, now I turn over the floor to you.
Thank you, sir. We will now move to the election of Vice Chair, uh, for the Planning Commission. Is there anyone who'd like to make a nomination for Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, uh, I'd like to, I'd like to move to nominate, uh, Joseph Davis as Vice Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair?
I'd like to move to close the nomination for the twenty twenty-four Vice Chair, New Kent County Planning Commission.
Ms. Townsend, thank you very much. Those in favor to close the nominations, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Like to have another, uh, recommendation as far as?
I'll move to elect Joe Davis as the twenty twenty-four Vice Chair of the New Kent County Planning Commission.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. Ms. Berry.
Mr. LaRochelle.
Aye.
Mr. Moyer.
Aye.
Ms. Rose.
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Ms. Townsend.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Abstain.
Reverend Hathaway.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye. Congratulations, Davis. Moving on to the election of Public Hearing Chair, I open those nominations. If, if there's not one right off the bat, I'd like to nominate Ms. Laura Rose for the position of twenty twenty-four Public Chair, uh, Public Hearing Chair for New Kent County Planning Commission for year twenty twenty-four. Any other nominations?
There's no other. There's no other nominations, I'll move to close the nominations for the twenty twenty-four Public Hearing Chair for the New Kent County Planning Commission.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Like to hear another motion, please. Mr. Davis.
Mr. Chair, I move to elect Laura Rose as the twenty twenty-four Public Hearing Chair of the New Kent County Planning Commission.
Roll call, Ms. Amber, take, uh, there, thank you.
Mr. LaRochelle.
Aye.
Mr. Moyer.
Aye.
Ms. Rose.
Abstain.
Dr. Schmidt.
Dr. Schmidt.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson. Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Ms. Townsend.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Reverend Hathaway.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye. Congratulations, Rose. Next to the election of Public Chair, Vice, Public Hearing Vice Chair, any nominations?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to nominate Joanne Smith, Sch, Schmidt, as the twenty twenty-four Public Hearing Vice Chair for the New Kent County Planning Commission.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. Any other nominations?
I move to close the nominations for the twenty twenty-four Public Hearing Vice Chair of New Kent County Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Dombrowski. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Next motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move to elect Joanne Schmidt as the twenty twenty-four Public Hearing Vice Chair for the New Kent County Planning Commission.
Roll call, please.
Mr. LaRochelle.
Aye.
Mr. Moyer.
Aye.
Ms. Rose.
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt.
Abstain.
Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Ms. Townsend.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Reverend Hathaway.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye. Final, uh, officer is for the election of the, actually, it's not officer, but representative, for the election of Plan RBA Representative, um, I will open those for, uh, that position for nominations. And if it's not inappropriate, I'd like to recommend or nominate Reverend, uh, Reverend Hathaway as the twenty twenty-four Plan RBA Representative for New Kent County Planning Commission for the year twenty twenty-four. Any other nominations?
I move to close the nominations for two thousand twenty-four Plan RBA Representative of the New Kent County Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Moyer. Uh, vote, roll call, not roll call, vote, please, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next, next.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Chair, I move to elect Reverend Milton Hathaway as the twenty twenty-four Plan RBA Representative of the New Kent County Planning Commission.
Roll call, Ms. Berry.
Mr. LaRochelle.
Aye.
Mr. Moyer.
Aye.
Ms. Rose.
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Ms. Townsend.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Reverend Hathaway.
Abstain.
Mr. Bennett.
Thank you very much, yes, uh, aye, excuse me, thank you very much, and congratulations to all those office holders. Just for the audience, we do have one more office, it's, it's pretty much appointed, it's not foreboding, that's the secretary, the secretary is operated by Ms. Ms. Berry, Ms. Inman, and, and Ms. Kelly, as they represent and give us all the supplies we need for our decision-making, and keep the, uh, records for our meetings. Next on their agenda is our adoption of the bylaws for the Planning Commission. I certainly hope everybody had a chance to peruse those. Is there any questions regarding those bylaws?
Mr. Chairman, I have a recommendation.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I would recommend amending under the, what, this is on page five dash seven, under number four, that a group shall be three or more persons.
Okay, thank you, sir, I'm gonna ask our county attorney, is there any, is, can that be changed, or do we need to open that up to, um, advertising?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, so if you turn to page seven of seven, there is actually a mechanism for amending the bylaws, and it states that these bylaws may be amended upon the recorded vote of two-thirds of the commission's entire membership, um, in the first regular meeting of the commission following the meeting in which the amendment is proposed, so.
Next.
If you all are, uh, amenable, we can vote on it at the next meeting, um, which would just be to adopt the bylaws as stated, with the exception of that one or more amendments if there are any other suggested amendments.
Okay, so, I'll honor that for a second, is there any other suggested changes to the bylaws? Hearing, uh, would you like to make a motion, sir, I think we do it through a motion, uh, of, of, motion to consider it for next time, or how do we do that, sir?
Um, there's no procedure in the bylaws that's stated for it, but that sounds, that sounds fine.
To carry to the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so if I could have roll call, please, on the motion to amend section K, subsection four, to identify group as a three in number or greater.
Mr. LaRochelle.
Aye.
Mr. Moyer.
Aye.
Ms. Rose.
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Ms. Townsend.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Reverend Hathaway.
Aye.
Ms. Thomas. Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Ms. Leduke, uh, pointed out to me that there is a, another provision that has almost identical language, it is on page six, so where's that one pertain to public hearings? We also have one for citizen comment periods, it's on page six, and that would be subsection D. So it was, I'm just clarifying, the intention is to amend both of those sections.
All in agreement?
Yep.
Okay, so, so we, thank you, sir. Thank you, Reverend Hathaway. Moving along, setting ourselves up for the whole year, we have the twenty twenty-four meeting schedule, please peruse that if you would. If you notice, our first two meetings are occur on Tuesday, that's because of holidays, fellow holidays, and Juneteenth does not interfere with our normal meeting schedule, as it did last year, I believe, so if you would take a peruse of that, and if you have a need for changes, please let me know now. And.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
If there's no other remarks, I, I move to accept the meeting schedule for the twenty twenty-four.
Is it okay to do just, not, uh, just a majority vote, Mr. Attorney? On this, sorry to get you standing up, man. We only go through this once a year.
Can you repeat the question, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, just do a majority vote, not a roll call vote, on adopting of the meeting schedule?
Uh, please do a roll call vote.
Okay. Miss, Ms. Berry, thank you, very kind.
Mr. LaRochelle.
Aye.
Mr. Moyer.
Aye.
Ms. Rose.
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Ms. Townsend.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Reverend Hathaway.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye. Item number five on our agenda is the approval of the December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three minutes. Again, I hope you had time to peruse that, and if there are any changes, errors, or corrections that need to be ne- uh, noted, please make them now.
Mr. Chairman, I, I had a list of, um, proposed edits, and I, I just gave them to, um, Ms. Berry.
Could you paraphrase them, please? Just paraphrase them.
Mo- most of them were, um, simple, uh, just gra- grammar changes of a few, uh, small word changes, uh, noth- nothing, nothing substant- substantial that would, that would impact the, um, the, the meaning.
Okay.
Of the minutes, um.
Can you give an example, please?
Okay, um. On the, regarding the, uh, Mr. Hathaway's, uh, remarks on the C, uh, CIP, um, I changed, uh, re- rebuild of Route one oh six to improvement of one oh six to match the, match the language, um, there were a couple, uh, just grammatical, uh, changes. On, on page four, um, the first bulleted paragraph, uh, the last bullet, bullet, where it says one hundred and fifty foot minimum distance from Walrani, uh, the, the last part of that, that sentence, uh, it looked like there were some extra, um, extra letters in there.
Okay.
Uh, I think, I think it was supposed to say existing mature growth vegetation for screening.
Where, where is that?
Um.
What page?
Uh, page, page four, uh, the, the last bullet in the first paragraph. Cause it says existing miss to mature growth vegeta- I, I think, I think that was probably just a couple extras, ke- keystrokes. Oh, really? Okay.
Is that the crux?
Uh, yeah, uh, few, a few tense chan- a few tense changes, um. Yeah, that was, that was it.
Thank you, Ms. Rose, Mr. Davis.
Mr. Chairman, I do have, uh, three, um, page two, bottom paragraph, uh, first bullet item, um, the word hanger, uh, spelled with a A instead of E. And then, um, page five, second to the last paragraph, second line, uh, toward the end, the end of the sentence, there's a lot of residents, I believe it should be residences, add an S to it, plural. And then the line below that, when it says Ms. Ripchicks, there should be a, an apostrophe. And that's all of them.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any other commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, page five, the paragraph that starts with Miss Andy Gauthier, the last sentence here says devastat- it should say devastating, how devastating a fire could be, so it says devastating now.
Close.
That's all.
Thank you, Ma- Mr. LaRochelle. Any other commissioners? Got those changes, Ms. Berry? I will entertain a motion. Yes, Ms. Townsend.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we accept the minutes as presented with the corrections made.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. Ms. Berry?
Mr. LaRochelle.
Aye.
Mr. Moyer.
Aye.
Ms. Rose.
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Ms. Townsend.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Reverend Hathaway.
Abstain.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye. Thank you, Ms. Berry. Our next item on the agenda is citizen comment period, and, Ms. Leduke, if you wouldn't mind, identifying those people who may sign up for that. If I rem- if I may remind the audience, this is a period of time which you may come up to the podium and speak about any topic that's, um, appropriate for the Planning Commission, except for those items that are on the public hearing tonight. Being there is none, I will close the citizen comment period. Ms. Leduke, is there, are there any presentations, that's items set on our agenda? And unfin despeseness, I don't think there is any, either. We are now moving along to the public hearing ses- uh, sector, uh, section of our meeting, and I will turn it over to Ms. Laura Rose.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, tonight we have two public hearings before us, each has been properly advertised for tonight's consideration. Let me take a moment to review the procedures that we will use for tonight's hearings. Each public hearing will be considered separately. Staff will give a brief overview of the hearing that is before us. The sponsor of the case will be given an opportunity to make a presentation. Commissioners will be given an opportunity to ask questions of the sponsors or staff for clarification purposes. I will then open the citizens' comment portion of the public hearing and receive your comments. Sign-up sheets are located on the desk by the front doors of the administration building. I ask the following, you come to the podium, you state your name and address for the record, address your comments to the commission, and limit your comments to three minutes. When the timer sounds, please conclude your remarks. Please note that the commission members will not answer your questions during the citizens' comment period, but will certainly take those questions and comments into consideration during the deliberation period of the public hearing. I'll now open the first public hearing for application CUP dash zero three dash twenty-three, Chamberton Solar Carmel One LLC.
One LLC and Two LLC.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, everyone. Just going to give a brief overview of the application, then turn it over to the applicants. Our representatives from Chamberton Energy have applied for a conditional use permit to construct a one and a two-megawatt solar facility on approximately 26.5 acres of land located off Spiritwood Lane in Barrensville. The property is part of a larger parcel that is zoned agricultural and is designated as rural lands in the comprehensive plan. The New Kent County zoning ordinance requires a CUP in the A1 zoning district for a solar generation facility. The facility is proposed to be accessed off Spiritwood Lane and the applicant will be responsible for traffic control and any required maintenance to the roads during construction. The performance standards and the zoning ordinance, along with the proposed conditions written into the permit, will help to address any visual and noise impacts the project will create. Specific buffers and screening will be required and construction will be restricted to daylight hours. Decommissioning of the site, which is also addressed in the performance standards, will be required by the applicant at the end of the project life. The standards for review of CUPs are set forth in section 98-744 of the county code and are listed in your staff memo. There are 15 proposed conditions in PC resolution PC-01-24. The applicants are here tonight, like I said, would like to make a presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to make the presentation in front of you tonight. My name is Kate Patapola. I am a development manager for Chamberton Energy and for the project Carmel. I'm here with my colleague, Chamberton CEO Mike Doniger, and Pete Melis, our civil engineering from central engineering. So how does it work? Okay. Let me provide a brief background on Chamberton. Can you hear me okay? A little background on Chamberton. So we are headquartered in Maryland with the local office here in Midlothian. The company was established four years ago and we've grown since to over 40 employees with a collective 200 years of experience in solar. Our strong financial backing comes from our partner, Greenbacker Capital, who has over three gigawatts of active solar projects in the U.S. Let's move to project overview. So it is planned to be a three-megawatts project and the size, it would be approximately 17 acres out of the total 62 acres, as Kelly mentioned, and the parcel is currently fully wooded and was logged for decades. So that meaning that project doesn't take any land out of farming. So the project is located near the end of a private drive called Spiritwood Lane, which is off New Kent Highway, just down the road. Let me zoom in on the details. So you can see the proposed location of the panels and the forest surrounding it. And we are planning to use what's called single-axis trackers, meaning the solar panels will be tracking east to west throughout the day to follow the sun to maximize the production. So we believe that such location makes the project most ideal because how well it's hidden from the view by this natural dense vegetation that's already existing. Get a little bit into the design details. So on top right corner, you can see this is Spiritwood Lane, which is how long you'll need to drive off the New Kent Highway to get to the entrance of the project, which is over 1,000 feet. And we will be utilizing that to access the site and for the traffic and for the regular maintenance. We will always maintain a passable road to, since this road is shared among several neighbors. So we will make sure we will not be blocking it by the construction traffic. And also, once the project is, once the construction is complete, we only expect approximately one pickup style truck a month for regular maintenance. So we have, as I said, intentionally designed to place this array towards the center of the parcel to mitigate any visual impact from the road and neighbors. And if you don't know it's there, you won't be able to tell. And just one other thing to note that we're planning to have this project be part of a program called Shared Solar. It's been around in Virginia for about two years now. So I don't know if any of you are familiar with it. I have a slide further on that, talk a little bit more in detail. But it basically lets Dominion customers, and we will specifically prioritize New Kent residents to receive a discount on their electrical bill. Just a little bit on what my team has done in terms of neighbor outreach. So we've spoken to all the direct neighbors as well as contacting every neighbor within a one-mile radius, just sharing the project, yeah, sharing project information and inviting to meet in person and of course to the community meeting that we held in August that was well attended. We are trying to be a good neighbor and identify local organization that can benefit from donation. And currently, we have identified Dreamcatchers, is it like a therapy horse organization that we would be sponsoring a horse there. It's a couple miles, it's about three to four miles down the road of New Kent Highway. So the residents would also hopefully be able to use those services and benefit. We are familiar with the New Kent Solar Performances Standards and zoning ordinance and in full compliance, as I mentioned, the array will be completely screened and not be able to be, not be visible and will be surrounded by the fence. We are maintaining the minimum buffers as well as the 50, at least 50-foot vegetative buffer around the array. We have submitted decommissioning plan and also held a community meeting. There is also no lighting on site that's proposed. So going back to Shared Solar, it's a program that basically helps, it doesn't, that basically lets Dominion customers receive a discount on their electricity bill from the power generated by such projects as Project Carmel. And we estimate approximately 500 subscriptions will be available by this three-megawatt solar array, which would save about $150 to $200 a year for each customer, which my colleague likes to say, it's not going to help you retire early, but you don't have to do anything and get a discount on your bill. Okay. Why is this project a good neighbor? As I mentioned, a couple arguments is we believe this is really the best possible location because of how hidden it is. It will produce no noise, offer savings to Dominion customer. We have, we will be posting decommissioning bond in case something, in unlikely event, there is something wrong with the production or company goes out of business, or at the end of its normal life, the company will have the funds to decommission it. We will also be planting native pollinator mix that kind of reinforces the soil and also benefits farmers and crop within the five-mile radius. And last but not least, we will be generating taxes with this project, but not without using any county-provided services. And the next couple slides, I'm just going to share some of the pictures. So you can see what I mean when I said it's really most ideal location. This is taken from the intersection between Spiritwood Lane and New Kent Highway. It's the entrance of that access road that I mentioned. And you can see on the back there, this is cell tower and it's over 60 feet tall. And this is where the proposed entrance would be. And our panels are barely 15 feet tall at max. So you can see that you can't see, pretty much. So moving, oops, run away. And this is a picture from off New Kent Highway. It's about 400 feet away. It says the project, I think it's type it meant to say the project parcel boundary, the project is actually over 1,000 feet from this point. And then the next one is just if you're facing the proposed project directly, just to show the density of the current conditions and the woods. And that concludes my presentation. Please ask any questions. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
You mentioned that this was, this has been historically timbered land. When was the last time it was timbered? I mean, as far as, you know, once it's timbered, it goes back up, but it...
Yeah, it was timbered 2010. I have a landowner present here who, yeah.
Are there any wetlands on the property?
Yes, so the wetlands hug in the parcel around the perimeter, but we're not going to impact or we're staying far within the RPA buffers. So there's no impact.
And what is the total width of the buffer around the entire perimeter for all the adjacent property owners?
Right, so the ordinance requires at least 50 feet minimum vegetative buffer and this is what we are going to keep. But just worth noting that it's, the rest of the parcel will be, you know, still in regrowth after timbering. So the 50 feet is the minimum. Also, there is a wetland area, as I mentioned, that goes around the perimeter and these forests will remain in growing in that stream as well. So 50 feet will be the narrowest point of the vegetative buffer.
Get through with your question. Yep.
I'd like a definition of dense buffer, if you would. What is your vision of a dense buffer?
That looks pretty dense to me. It's immature trees.
If you look at that, you know, I can see through the woods. So if I'm looking at a dense buffer, I want a buffer where it's not going to impact our neighbors.
Yeah, absolutely. And our goal is to maintain the 100% visual screening from our array. So this would mean a sufficient vegetative buffer for us.
So then that means that you're going to go in and you're going to make sure that the visibility is not there. You know, you see, you've got some sporadic trees. The undergrowth will get there, but I mean, you've got neighbors that kind of have to live with this until the development has reached its mature age. Holly's, anything that has a dense leaf on it would make it so that it's not visible. So to me, when you say dense, I'm kind of thinking a point of, I don't want it to be visible. If that's a discussion that the board wants to take up, I just feel like we need to kind of protect the surrounding areas. So that's one question. And then maybe we can kind of come back and talk about that. Our last meeting, we talked about a wellness check. My concerns on this, your sites, is what are you going to do with damaged items? Your solar panels break. Are you going to just pile them up until you get a truckload? Or are you removing them from the site immediately?
Yeah, so that's a good question. That's the point and purpose of this maintenance that I mentioned previously that will be going on once a month or so, or is needed. I believe the panels are monitored. So if something is underperforming due to breakage or something like that, it's really in our interest to replace it as soon as possible because if it's not producing electricity, you know, it doesn't get to the grid, we will try to replace it as soon as possible. We will not be storing spare panels on the site.
Okay, if we, I could ask, Kelly, did we actually make that into a motion of a wellness check for our last site?
The last one?
Yes, we didn't call it a wellness check. We just said periodic inspections by county staff shall be blah, blah, blah.
Will that be also required on this application?
Certainly can, yeah. And just to address the landscaping question that you were talking about, they will be required to do a landscaping plan that has to be approved by us with the site plan regarding the visibility. So that'll be another check we can do.
Okay, thank you. Now, my last question is that you said discounts were going to be sent to certain people. Who are you talking about? Are you talking about the surrounding neighbors? Or are you talking about all of New Kent County is going to get a discount?
So another great question. There, as I said, there, we estimating the project would be able to generate approximately 500 subscriptions. So we have the ability to let, we don't directly go to the neighbors and knock on the doors and try to offer that. There is subscriber organizations who we hire to do that, to get on the list. The demand is usually higher than the supply. So there's usually waitlist. So we can tell the subscription organization who we want them to prioritize. So if we say, can you focus on New Kent County residents, this is, this was our promise, this is what they're going to do.
So who's going to oversee that?
We are, like, this is going to be contractual once we hire the subscriber organization.
Are you going to do a report back to the county and say that certain people got discounts? Or, I mean, how's that happen?
We certainly can, yeah, absolutely. They can, I can imagine they would generate a report with like the location of who they provide the services to.
Okay, then I'll back this question back up to Kelly. Do we have any of the other sites that do discounts?
The only other site we have in operation is the Correctional, and I do not know the ins and outs of their system.
Okay, so how would we oversee this?
I don't think we can.
So let me just step back a little bit. This is, as I said, it's planned to be a part of Shared Solar Program. So Virginia have, they started a pilot program two years ago where they dedicated certain amount of capacity to this program. And so this capacity has already been taken. They have opened a waitlist and the waitlist is slowly filling in. So the sooner we were able to get permits, the higher guarantee that we will be able to secure this capacity. There are currently some talks right now about expanding this. So I can't 100% tell you this project will be in Shared Solar, but this is our intent and we will really work hard to get there.
Okay, I don't want, I don't want to sound like I'm picking on you, but so it kind of sounds to me that you have to get on a waitlist with them. So it's not necessarily New Kent County people would get discounts. It's whoever goes and applies for this.
I'll let Mike explain that better.
Good evening, Mike Doniger, also from Chamberton Energy. I work here out of our Midlothian office. So yes, the way that Shared Solar works, and I'll back up to the slide just to kind of go through it a little bit. I guess this doesn't have the whole piece of it. But so we would open the project, once it gets into the Shared Solar Program, which is a Virginia-level program, a state-run program, then we're able to open up for subscriptions for anyone who's a Dominion customer. As Kate was mentioning, we would love to prioritize New Kent County residents to be As Kate was mentioning, uh, we would love to prioritize New Kent County residents to be front-of-line privileges. Uh, this program is really meant to help those who need it most. Um, so lower-income families, those sorts of, uh, uh, small businesses as well, uh, can also subscribe into the program. And so we can, uh, influence those decisions as a project, you know, by, by getting those pe- those, the, the priorities as to who, who actually that applies to subscribe, uh, would be then awarded, you know, in a first-come, first-served sort of basis. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I just want to make sure the, the way I was sort of taking it, that you were offering New Kent County residents discount. But it's not going to be that, it's gonna be where you are on the list.
And, no, so we have to get, there's two separate pieces that, I apologize for getting the confusion. So we have to get on, we have to get into the capacity from a state level. There's a state, you know, that's administered by Dominion overseen by the SCC. And then once we have that, the project is, is named as a commu- a shared solar project, then we control then who gets to be a subscriber to that project. So that piece of it is under our control, is who, who can be that subscriber. Um, and this is one of the, the things that is a little bit different about our company. We focus on this particular program nationwide. Uh, most states call it community solar, here in Virginia, we call it shared solar. Um, because we're really trying to help those who need it most. Um, and once we fill up that, that kind of priority, then we would look for, you know, um, other folks here in New Kent County. Um, this is different than most projects, like the one you heard last month. I believe their plan is to sell to Dominion. Um, the project would eventually be owned by Dominion and be inside the rate base of Dominion. As opposed to actually being able to see it directly as a discount off of someone's bill here in the county. Does that help? Somewhat. Happy to, to talk more about it. Yes, ma'am.
But you just said it, once you, your company will control subscribers, so you can limit that to New Kent County residents.
That's right.
So James City County, which is just on the road, they're out, New Kent is in?
Yes, so I would just, I would just put an asterisk there, if, if four hundred families sign up here in New Kent and for whatever reason, there's no more, then we're gonna want to fill the project. Uh, so I would describe it as head-of-line privileges. That makes sense?
And one more question.
Sure thing.
And how would you let, uh, New Kent County residents know about this?
Uh, it's the normal sort of advertising that you might see in the, uh, just like we advertised for this meeting in the local, um, uh, print press, as well as online, Facebook groups, you know, all the normal sort of social media and, and other ways of, of getting folks involved. We often go to, uh, you know, local events to, to get signups, um, through local organizations. Um, the trying again, we're trying really to, to help those who need it most and so trying to get to the points where those folks will actually hear about it.
Okay, my concern, one more, and then I'm gonna let y'all have the floor. Uh, is that a lot of our seniors and then some of our, uh, probably lower-income people may not have the actual resources to, to peruse through the internet and, and to, for these sources.
Yep.
Uh, and it seems to me that probably the best bet would be if you had a source of income that could help people, maybe our social services part people who know that we have people who are on fixed income, um, who don't have internet. Cause you know, we don't necessarily have internet everywhere in New Kent.
We know. Absolutely.
I would like to make that suggestion is that, you know, that way they can oversee, they, they probably know more of, of than we do as to who is in really dire need of some assistance.
Yes, ma'am. Will do.
Mr. Chair.
A few other questions. Um, you'd mentioned the six-foot fence, uh, I'm reading seven-foot fence in the, some of the documentation.
Yeah, I believe we are proposing seven-foot agricultural fence. Uh, yeah, maybe seven, six-foot was the minimum.
I'm sorry, I thought, I misheard, I thought you said six, so I just want to make sure it's gonna be. So seven-foot?
I think it's seven-foot, yeah.
Okay. Um, yeah. And, uh, and also, uh, this will be phased, uh, two phases, is that correct?
Yes.
Will, will the one, um, megawatt be done first or second, or how's the phasing?
They, yeah, they will be done together. It's just split in because, um, of the interconnection, but they are planned to be built together. Uh, yeah.
Okay. And, um, are there any agreements, right-of-way maintenance agreements with the other landowners? Or how is this, this is a private drive? Is there any type of, is it a dedicated right-of-way?
Yes, this is a private road and we have spoken to the landowner to the north, Mr. Buddy Gilman, and he, uh, we don't have any agreements on hands as of yet, but he, um, indicated that he's very open. There is a existing right-of-way to the, uh, parcel, so we will plan to have a specifically, um, separate one for the projects themselves.
So you'll create a new construction access or, or right-of-way?
Uh, that would be, uh, access right-of-way, um, that can be used as like for construction access as well.
Is that on the plaque?
It's the same road.
Yeah, it's, it's the same existing road, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I guess I want to make sure, want to make sure that the existing private drive is utilized by, even though it's just a couple other landowners that
Correct.
that is maintained, especially during the construction phase when you have more traffic going in and out.
Yeah, absolutely. The, the existing road will be returned to its original conditions after the construction is complete.
Okay, and is that something we as staff can ensure? And, uh, the distance from the nearest residence, um, I believe I picked up four hundred and sixty-four feet to the closest residence to the, a panel or a ramp.
Sounds right to me, yeah, from the east, northeast.
Okay.
Northwest.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Um, and also, um, I, I have visited the property, I, I live in the Burnsville area, I'm somewhat familiar with that general area to begin with. Um, and my observations from GIS and visiting the site itself, or at least the entrance to the site. I went to the, to the, the tower location there, uh, for our spirit wood. Um, it is, you know, and I don't know what the definition of dense is, but I do think it is kind of dense there too. It's, it's cut over land, it's prob- there's two, two and three-inch trees, um, you know, both pine and, or, you know, hardwood and softwoods in there, but, um, the, and I guess, uh, and with the current performance standards, certainly they have to meet, um, you know, the, the screening or the buffering through the performance standards we have anyway. So, and I'll make a note too, you mentioned fifty-foot is the minimum, it seems to be a hundred-foot buffer around, cause like RPA buffer, cause it's, you do have RPA around the entire, most of the site. Um, so it looks like you have at least a hundred feet, correct?
Yeah, it's a hundred-feet RPA buffer from the wetlands, uh, which, yeah, we're staying away from.
From the property line to the, um, before? The closest you can get to the arrays is gonna be more than a hundred, or at least a hundred feet.
Correct.
Correct, okay. And the limits of clearing obviously, obviously the same, so. And, uh, let's see, um, and the current owners, I guess it would be a lease agreement, are they renting or selling?
Uh, this would be a lease agreement.
Lease, okay. And as far as, uh, for, for staff, um, so with the, currently it's in the AFD. Um, this, the entire sixty-two acres will be removed from the AFD and then there'd be some tax recovery for, for that aspect of it, correct?
That's not correct, actually. Um, the, the last time that, that we did this, the parcel was in the AFD program and the commissioner revenue allowed for the, um, usable acreage for the solar project to be withdrawn. They will have to go through the withdrawal process, so the twenty-six point five acres will be withdrawn, but the rest can stay in.
Yeah, that's, that's a much more equitable.
Yeah, we went through that last time around.
I've been through that too.
Yeah.
Why ask? And, uh, s- Oh, and, um, just one final note or comment, um, the donation to Dreamcatchers is very nice. Um, I just want to make note that is in James City County.
Yeah.
Um, if you were to choose to pick a charitable organization within New Kent, there may be, you may get assistance with, for that. Um, I know it's not restricted to those only in James City, but Dreamcatchers is in James City off Fire Tower Road, so.
We are open to your recommendation to what's local to Burnsville and New Kent.
Uh, I'm sure we have staff or, or either that or social services that are saying they can make recommendations on maybe a, a charity if you choose to.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Uh, two questions. One is, I first saw the, the, uh, first Egress Road that came in and it looks like it's, it was under, that was there. Are you gonna do anything to improve that coming in with all the trucks? Cause that looks like it's kind of maybe difficult.
Well, yeah, so, uh, we are going to bring it back to its existing condition. It's just gravel road, private drive. I know the, uh, the sites north and south are both harvested for timber, right? So there is definitely some equipment moving, uh, so it's used to that kind of trucks. Uh, so it is re-gravelled and repaired whenever needed and we will make sure that it will be returned to its original condition at the end of construction. And, uh, once the project is operational, we really don't expect any, uh, heavy equipment, just like pickup truck once a month.
Second question. Um, pile drives, you, you've mentioned Monday through Saturday. And I know Norris travels even though you've got a good buffer. Uh, why Saturday? Do you have a second?
I believe Kelly was saying, talking about the timing of, this is just a normal, I guess, the typical construction during the daylight times, right?
We normally do Monday to Friday, but it's just the county.
Yeah, just whatever can- county standards are, we're happy to follow.
So you're amenable to Monday through Friday?
If you want us to, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I do have a couple of questions for the applicant. Um, how many other sites were considered in New Kent County other than this one? And can you give me a general location for those considerations, not specific, but general locations?
Uh, I, there has been several, okay, Mike stepping in, so I'll give him the floor.
You may remember. Absolutely, so you may remember that we've been before you once before for a project in the far west side, we called Vincent. Um, that continues to remain under consideration as we were, uh, you know, uh, worked with you all through the performance standards, but we reordered that, that, uh, connect, interconnection queue, and so it's been put to the back burner for now. Um, the main power through New Kent County, and we've submitted, um, also during that time when we were working with you on Project Vincent, we had submitted a, a, a study of New Kent County and the distribution lines, um, which really show, uh, kind of where the possible solar sites can be in New Kent County and with the new commissioners here. Happy to resubmit that, take a look and update it if that's of interest. Um, remember, uh, Mr. Larchelle talking, talking to you about that, I believe, last year as well, is Mr. Bennett. Um, and so, uh, but basically the main power here, uh, coming from the Correctional Power Station, which this connects into, runs along New Kent Highway. So from the powers, the substation kind of west along New Kent Highway. Um, and that's the main part that we've sort of looked at, uh, as, as our company and, and have a few, uh, discussions with landowners um, with respect to that. Um, it will require an expansion of that, that substation, so, um, that may or may not be economically feasible. It's something that we're working with Dominion on.
Thank you. Part of the, there, I'm presuming, I think I read there, there's a vegetative management plan for the, for the improvements. And that includes creation of pollinator, development ground, uh, development ground covering, runoff attenuation, moisture retention of the soil. But the one thing I wanted, but that's not specifically mentioned is the conditioning of the soil for future use. I, I'm guessing, I'm not anticipating, but I'm guessing that after the term of the lease and any renewals, that this parcel will go back to agricultural, um, uses.
Absolutely.
So it would be of interest, I think, that the soil conditioning, um, would occur just, not just through the, the growth and death of plant material on-site, but somehow reinforced during this twenty or thirty-year period.
Absolutely, so we work with, uh, as part of the comment, a comment we made around native grasses. We work, work with, uh, to, um, local experts on, on developing the seed mix that will per- uh, enha- enhance as much as possible the, the ground and rejuvenate it as it's laying fallow essentially, um, during the, the lifetime of the project. Um, and so at the end, with the intention, the idea that solar is a temporary use and that the land is, uh, absolutely can be returned to agricultural uses, uh, after the end and should be, uh, restored in a better condition than it is today. And so the native grasses that we mentioned in our application and, and the presentation are meant exactly to do that.
Remind me, if, I think this is initially a twenty-year lease with, uh, four or five, uh, four or five years' conditions possible?
Correct.
And the solar array has that kind of lifespan to it?
Solar panels are normally rated for thirty years. Uh, of course, there's been a lot of innovation in solar panels, uh, over the last five to ten years. Um, and so the, then there's always new in- innovations coming out. Um, so, but generally speaking, it's approximately thirty years that, that the rating is for. Uh, we, we generally like to get leases, so we have the option to go out a little bit longer than that, thirty-five or forty years, just in case the, the plant is overperforming. Um, you know, it's kind of a lifetime expectations, but that's what it's based on, is, is the thirty-year life of the panel.
Is there, with the improvement in solar technology, is there likelihood that even though they are, let's say, fifteen acres dedicated to solar array and energy production, that maybe fifteen acres is not needed? I'll give you, um, an example is that Strata Solar, twenty megawatts was envisioned for two hundred-some-odd acres and there's a whole field that they, from their site plan, that, that they, they did not utilize in, I guess, meaning their twenty-megawatt, maximum output. So they, that's what I'm saying, is, is the plan to go in there, fully put in this, the entire complex or do part of it and then come back and see whether it produces and then do another part to get to your maximum or?
God, yes, as we mentioned in Mr. Davis's question, even though we split it electrically between the one megawatt and two megawatts, there's two different interconnections. Um, that was, that, that was due to based a little bit how we were interpreting, uh, some guidance from Dominion. Um, the intention is to build both at the same time. Uh, and so one, not a phased from a construction approach, it'll be built all at the same time. Um, and, uh, as long, as soon as we get both of these interconnection agreements, uh, completed with Dominion.
I know mo- almost all the applicants that do come before us mentioned that the solar array, or the solar panels have some recyclable content to it, but there is, at the decommissioning time, some materials that has to be disposed of. There's just no market in the, in the, uh, renewable products to, for that. So where's the intended landfill for this material that's not recycled?
Absolutely, so remember, that's very far down, down the line here, for thirty-plus years, um, that we're, we're talking about. Um, but, uh, you know, and, and it should be a very small amount, I don't have that, that figure right off the top of my head as far as like how many trucks to the landfill, but, um, obviously we would prefer to take it to the closest landfill here in the county that, that's accessible, um, after maximizing everything that can be recycled, uh, first, so.
I don't think New Kent's landfill can quite accommodate it, so.
Okay, understand.
Uh, if I may turn your attention to the decommissioning. I kind of went through the decommissioning costs and I found it to be, um, in my opinion, not adequate. But I'm not gonna hang up, hang up on it. I just think there should be, uh, the costs, I think, are pretty low. And the one thing I didn't see in that decommissioning cost is any kind of measures for temporary solar erosion control, cause there will be site control, site management to go on with that decommission. Just like there was in construction, there is gonna be that site management of solar erosion control measures during that decommission.
We're happy to relook at that with the staff, um, in between.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Sure.
Can I ask a, just a, a additional question on the, on the decommissioning? It, it says it was done by an independent engineer. Do you, do you have a, a contract engineering firm?
Uh, no, so the decommissioning, uh, that was probably submitted to the county was, that was done in-house. Uh, that's how we do all our decommissioning agreements and, uh, and then the county will have a third-party engineer to verify the amounts during the site plan phase.
Kelly, that's, that, that's the, that's, that's your norm?
Well, this will be the first time, so this is, that's what's under the new performance standards. That's what was put in.
Okay.
They'll have to update all the values and do a, yeah.
The, the, the provision that there will be a, a periodic review of that and, and updating of the, those figures is, is in place? is in place?
It's, yeah, it's not in the staff report or any of the conditions, but it's in the performance standards that were adopted last year.
Okay.
Madam Chair, one more question of staff. Would you sit back down? So, looking at the county GIS on the future land use layer, I noticed a small portion of this parcel is actually under hamlet.
It is.
So is that, so my general question is, you know, and of course, the remainder is in rural lands, as we can expect.
Right, right.
So how accurate are these overlays? Or is this, is part of this property actually under future land use for hamlet? Does it follow parcel or property laws?
No, the future land use layer, as it is right now, does not follow parcels. So that's something that we could look at, you know, in the new update for the comprehensive plan, but it's just a guide. And the hamlet portion was to be centered more along New Kent Highway.
Right, right. And it appears it doesn't really approach into the project area, I don't believe, certainly not to an extent.
That's a good eye, I did notice that, too.
Kelly, I've got one more question.
Sure.
In the, in the staff report, it talks about comments from reviewing agencies and that they'll be addressed during the site plan. Can you give us an indication of what, what those comments were?
Yeah, the main ones came from Ms. Adams, the planner, talking about how the AFD portion will have to be taken care of. And then the other ones were basically environmental comments. So they're going to have to do their full-blown stormwater and EMS, just like with every other site plan. And then the training for the emergency services, the sheriff and fire and rescue do request that, and that's also in the performance standards. So we'll work something out so they can be trained in case of emergency. The other comment came from Public Utilities, who said, "No comment, this is way off our map, and they won't require Public Utilities anyway." And then VDOT didn't have any comments, because it's not on a VDOT road.
The, the, the training of EMS staff will be, will be borne by, by the developer?
Right, right.
Okay.
Yep. And that's, that'll be a first time for that, too.
Madam Chair, Kelly, this, this one will probably fall on you as well.
Sure.
In their decommissioning plan, section five, there's a sentence that says, "In the event that commercial operations cease for over 12 months, project areas to be restored." Did we not include something that they have to notify us on a certain timeline if they stop producing?
Yes.
Is it six months, or what was?
Oh, gosh, I don't remember.
So they can't shut it down and let it sit for 12 months? We have, they have to notify us?
Yeah.
To say we're offline, we've been offline for 30 days.
Yeah, I do remember that being a big discussion item, so we definitely put that in the performance standards. But I'm, sorry, I can't recall exactly what it is.
All right, and for the developer, for Sherwooden, the, could you go back to the illustration showing the plaque? We've heard a lot, that's fine, that one right there. So we've heard a lot of the screening as viewed from 249, looking at the site. But are you saying that the land between the solar site 249 is not going to be logged? It's going to remain as is? Or that's not included in your project, right? You don't control that?
Exactly. So I can't speak for the adjacent landowner and their future decisions on what to do with their land, but we can guarantee there will be at least 50 feet vegetative buffer maintained at all times for the project, surrounded it around the perimeter. Likely going to be more wide, wider in many areas, but that's inside our parcel. That's what we can control, and that's what we're going to guarantee.
The, again, to the decommissioning plan, section four, you talk about foundations. So your racks, it is just your driving steel under the ground? There's no concrete footings or anything? It's just driving steel under the ground?
Exactly.
So you pull it out and that's it?
Pretty much.
So the only concrete work is pads for your transformers and equipment inverters?
Sounds like you're familiar with the solar site.
How do you get, are you going overhead or underground from the site to 249?
Um, yeah, so let me see if there's any, hmm. So we are proposing to go underground, because it's one of the conditions to conceal all the utilities. So we propose to go underground. There's actually currently an underground utility to the cell tower that goes, and I think it belongs to Dominion, that goes to New Kent Highway. So we're planning to run hours along the way, underground as well, except for there is one area of, there is a stream running, and we will propose to go overhead there just to be more environmentally conscious and less, to make less disturbance to that stream. It's close to the New Kent Highway.
I would assume it's a single-phase feed going in there now to the tower? Is it three, it's not going to be three-phase going to that cell tower, I can imagine?
I can't speak for the cell tower. We would need three-phase for our project.
That'll be underground, except for the stream?
Correct.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the commission? Karen, um, we will now move to the public comment.
Thank you.
I'm Bill Owen, this is my wife, Gail. I think you said you needed our address. It's 110 Richards Road in Williamsburg. The property that Ron, I believe, is trying to have the project done on borders, property that my brother, my sister, and myself all own. Five generations of my family have lived there. My great-grandfather, my grandfather, my mother, myself, and my oldest son. We've owned that land since 1840. The house itself, Poplar Springs, which is what that property is named for, is on the historic register. These are the concerns that I have about the project. How does it affect the value of the land around it? With the house on the historic register, Poplar Springs, the 68 acres that my brother, sister, and I own, 51 is wooded, 17 is open fields. That's currently valued by the county at $366,000. Does this project decrease that value or increase it? Does it affect the historic register of the Poplar Springs house itself? The second area of concern I have is interference with wildlife. My cousins currently hunt that land. They pay a fee to do that. We also have the 17 acres under a USDA contract out of the Quentin office, and it's for habitat restoration and access for quail. So that also is for hunting. My third concern is leaching of materials or heavy metals, anything of that nature. The reason the property is named Poplar Springs is because the ground springs up. I've walked it with loggers, I've walked it with other people. There are numerous places where the springs come up, literally. And so the wetlands that they were referring to, that were on the edge of Ron's property, is what those wetlands feed into. And the last question is, how would this property affect us five years from now if I choose to log those 51 acres? My mother logged them in 2003. The last forester that I went in and looked at the land, he valued the timber at about $40,000. And I said, "Well, I'm not interested in disturbing it, we'll just let it continue to mature, and we'll choose to do that in five years if that looks like the right thing." So those are my concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the list is Ron Blackburn.
My name's Ron Blackburn at 2905 Huguenot Trail, Powhatan, Virginia. I'm the current owner of the property with a family that was one of my partners that's now deceased. I've managed his property since 1979 as a forester. I'm a graduate forester from Virginia Tech, so there's probably some questions you might want to clarify. As far as access, that's a deeded 30-foot right-of-way. It has public utilities on it, which means that, you know, the power comes in and out of that road, and so there's phone service and different, in the actual right-of-way. One of the things I'd like to correct is that this, this is an agricultural property. It's subject to a 50-foot buffer on wetlands, not an RPA, it's not an RPA. Now, there are areas that, like where we border Bill Richardson's property, where I'd have a 50-foot easement buffer, forestry buffer, and he'd have a 50-foot easement forestry buffer, which would be 100-foot. So there is some corrections there. Forestry and agricultural properties are 50-foot, and it's not an RPA, it's a, it's a, it's called a stream-side management zone. And that's, that's, you know, part of that correction. And currently, the property has 13-year-old pine trees on it, there are 600 stems per acre. The density is such that 25 feet is going to be about the maximum visibility you'd have in those properties. If you go in there right now, you'll, you'll see, it's pretty dense. And we plan on continuing the forestry, civil culture, or habitat that we maintain, that I've maintained since 1979. I started working at Chesapeake Corporation and managing that forest, and I continued that until the time, until right now. I bought it in 1999. So if there's any other questions that you might want to know about the, about the property, I'd be glad to answer. And the cell tower's 185 feet, not 60 feet tall. So there's, I'm just making a few corrections here. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jean Mosley.
Good evening, my name is Jean Mosley, 18225 Spiritwood Lane, Barhamsville. I've been a resident for 25 years here, been a neighbor to Ron. One of our concerns is the original or area of the road, its condition. If, we've had several heavy downpours right now, so if he came out there and assisted the road, you'd say, "This is pretty poor." So I would like to see a plan put out that they would come in, lay some gravel down, grade the road prior to beginning their project, and then maintain that through the entire project. So we're not put out any worse than it is, because right now, we have very light traffic on the road, and you went out there, it's like you're four-wheeling because of the erosion. So the road's never been totally graded correctly, so the erosion comes down the side or down the center of the road. So it does leave a lot of potholes, and it's very difficult to navigate. Ron does, has had some equipment out there, that he's come out there and pounded and brought the gravel back up, but that only lasts, you know, for a month or two months, and then it erodes again. So honestly, I've loved being out here. We have an apiary out here, we've had several, for several years, where my wife is with me. My son couldn't be here, because he's, right now, he has cancer, and so he couldn't come out to speak tonight. We're not too in favor of this. We have Dominion's power solar farm right next to our, adjacent to our property. It didn't go well during its construction, not that it affected us, but the people that live closer to it. So I really, do we really need this technology? Do we really need solar? My second concern, or third concern, is subscriptions. Subscriptions typically cost something. So how do you subscribe to this? What's the cost and fee? Because when we went to the New Kent High School for an info meeting, they said, "We would probably get within a mile radius, we'd get $7.50 back on our bill." Really? I mean, what's the incentive? They said, "Over a 20- to 30-year period, New Kent County would have like $120,000 in taxes." Is that really worth the dollars? I mean, I don't know. It just doesn't seem like this community solar is community solar. It just seems like this is a place that people are putting their dollars, and then they're going to take a net loss on their taxes because of the property. I just don't see the effectiveness or the value of having a 3-megawatt.
That's the time.
Thank you.
The last person to sign up is Bettina Stoudt.
Dr. Bettina Stoudt, and my husband just spoke beautifully, thank you. 18225 Spiritwood Lane. And not only is our son going through a lot of things, we have an adult daughter with cognitive disabilities, anxiety disorders, and seizures, right? And she freely roams that road and walks and enjoys nature, so I cannot imagine what 12-month construction with trucks and noise for the most part of the week will do to her and restrict her in her ability to move freely. We enjoy New Kent County for its rural beauty and the people. And so, green energy is big money. If you look at Greenbacker Capital, right? They're known worldwide for investment, and these people invest because they're great, they get great tax write-offs. And I understand all that and respect that, but we are directly impacted by that. So if you tell me that the community subscribers earn like maybe $15 back a month, and the environmental impact, not mention our impact, but the environmental impact, we just survived logging from, what's this gentleman's name next to us? Not Ron, Gillum from Ashland? Anyway, that was just like a war zone for years. It took forever for wildlife to come back to see a turkey or some deers. Ecology doesn't stop at a fence, there are wetlands. That's why Dominion abandoned actually building solar power right next on the other side of our property, because they said it's too much to level the land, and so it sits there for lease. And I just think the benefits for the county, you came in August, you said you make some $100,000 over 20 years. Is it really worth it? The entire impact to the community, is the community really benefiting from it? And I, it's a nice gesture to donate to a charity, yes, it's James City County, but I fully endorse your contribution, because it's a great charity. You know, that's just eye-washing. I really wish that this, and I trust that this panel will look closer what this investment is, because in August, we were told, "Well, they're just responsible for constructing the site." Then they hand it over to somebody else. What guarantees do we have? Who will manage the site? What about safety? Our neighbors on the other side, who live around solar panels with Dominion, they had a fire, you know, and it was, it was a fire, a burn or something. They came to the August meeting and were very concerned, too. They have brown water, it impacted their water. I mean, I have a lot of environmental concerns, apart from my family's concern and our well-being and peace and quiet. I just think there are just so many more things to consider before granting, converting... I just think there are just so many more things to consider before granting, converting agricultural land to be served by solar panels. It is not as green as it seems. The bunny part is very green. Thank you. I seize my time.
Thank you. That concludes the public comment portion. I will now turn it back over to Mr. Bett.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. Informal discussion. Anybody like to start informal discussion? Or I will entertain a motion. Ms. Townsend.
Under the motions, a motion that we have forth, could some items be placed into that motion as well for the future development of the site? Ones such as if the road is in such poor shape, can the road be maintained up to standards even before the development happens? Or is that something that we have any authority over?
I see some motion in the audience, so stand by.
Was that a question about the viability of putting some maintenance condition into it? Yes, that would be appropriate. The access to this property also feeds access to other neighboring properties, so this would be a mitigation of the land use on other neighboring properties. So if you would like to move that you, I guess it would be a move to adopt a positive recommendation with an added condition that the applicant be required to maintain the road for the life of the project?
Does the applicant have to agree with this prior to a motion?
So because this is a special use permit, unlike a rezoning, under zoning ordinance changes, proffers have to be voluntarily made by the applicant. These are conditions that would be placed on the applicant by eventually the Board of Supervisors. So this would be your recommendation to the Board of Supervisors to place this condition in addition to the other proposed conditions.
Okay. As for another item to be, yes?
Excuse me. Would it be advisable that we come up with some added conditions and then parlay those to a decision that we want to adopt them versus just keep adding, then adopt and adding and adopt?
Well, I was hoping we could have all four of my items.
Okay. Okay. Continue on then.
Give them one lump.
Yeah, continue on.
But I just want to make sure that I have clarification that they're actually, we're actually able to request this.
Thank you very much. Very well.
So as to item one, that would be appropriate.
That big one. The other one, I used the word wellness check, but I think we called it something else, a periodic inspection to make sure that the place is being maintained?
Yes. During the last special use permit application that we had, I opined that that would also be an appropriate condition. I think the language that we used was that it would be periodic inspections by the applicant to ensure the well-being of the property and maintenance of the facility.
The applicant or just the applicant?
It would be the applicant's inspection. The county would be allowed to also inspect. The county staff would facilitate that process.
I guess can I tag along with a question? Does New Kent have, I guess, wetlands inspectors or, you know, is anything, does it have to be based on complaint before we go out there to look at something or?
So there would be, I believe, BMPs on the property and so the division of stormwater, sorry, the environmental division, I'm thinking JCC terms, the environmental department would have the ability to go and inspect the BMPs that feed the stormwater improvements. That's a power that they would already have and then I believe one of the proposed conditions on here is that the applicant must, this is condition twelve, so if you're looking at, I don't see page numbers here, but it's condition twelve. The applicant must enter into a standard form BMP maintenance agreement with New Kent County, which will detail the applicant's responsibility to maintain its stormwater facilities. Part of those standard form BMP maintenance agreements is the environmental department's ability to go on the property to inspect those facilities.
If I may, sir, I brought that up at the last meeting on the other application that would be a periodic ground truthing, if you want to call it, or maintenance check or something like that, that would occur, maybe over two years or something like that, through discussion, open discussion with both the environmental division manager and our county attorney. It looks like we have duplicate clauses, both through the BMP maintenance agreement and conditions when they get an erosion control permit, that those items are covered, that we're allowed on the property for inspections.
Okay. My concern was to stockpile debris, the items. And, you know, as I say, things break.
Yes.
And so they have a tendency, I mean, you may not mean to do it, but piles of garbage have a way of building up and sometimes it gets overseen because the grass will grow over it and, you know, you forget to go pick it up.
Sure.
But I want to make sure that this is a clean site. So if we get the, all of that into one inspection saying, we're looking to make sure of the cleanliness, plus we're looking for the stormwater, I don't know how you want to word it, but maybe make that into...
It would be a housekeeping, a full housekeeping inspection more than just...
It'd be one person doing all jobs.
Yeah. And it'd be more intense environmentally. Be housekeeping, housekeeping is the best word for it, yes. Property maintenance.
Okay. So that's my second one. So the third one again is I'm going to make sure that I get clarification on that dense. As long as the site plan's reviewed by the county and we know that we have the dentsness, because sometimes people, you know, put one shrub and say, that's it. But you can still see through the woods, trees fall down, you know, openings happen. I want to make sure that we sort of respect the neighbors beside them. So is that something that I can request that they have to maintain and review the property lines?
So I believe that is already a requirement under the performance standards that the solar facility be shielded. And so they have already, one, they're required to, it's county ordinance that we have the power to enforce. And two, one of their proposed conditions was that they would follow those performance standards for the life of the project. So I think that number three would be covered.
I could be struggling with that, yes. Okay. The fourth and final one, again, I'm going to harp on, is about the discounts with the power. And Reverend Hathaway may be able to enlighten me, but I do believe there's an organization already in New Kent where several of the reverends and the preachers have gotten together and they meet about the needs of the county people. I know that I get a lot of emails out saying that we have a family in need of washers and dryers. We have somebody who can't make their house payment. But we have a group that's already helping, and is it with social services?
We do, we are, we do partner with social services. There are a couple of other groups, but they're the primary one.
So Ms. Townsend, we were batting a thousand. With this one, though, I will take exception. I don't think that a condition as described would relate to the mitigation of the land use for the use of a solar facility. I think it's very nice and pleasant that the applicant has offered to do this, but I don't think that we can condition an exception of this special use permit on how they run that particular program.
Okay. I'll stretch out.
I have a question before you make a motion. For you, sir. So I buy my coffee at Dunkin' Donuts in the morning, I pay estate tax, I pay a county tax on that coffee. Is New Kent prohibited, the Virginia Clean Economy Act, can we tax energy produced in the county? Can that be a revenue stream for the county?
I wish I had the answer to that question. I don't know. That's something that...
Does Shaver have the question, have the answer to that?
We do pay taxes to the county.
I'm talking about taxes per kilowatt hour, megawatt hour, something like that. Energy.
There is a difference between projects that are five megawatts and above and five ways and below, but there is a provision for taxing the projects.
I suggest that we research that and if that, this comes up in almost every one of these meetings, how does it benefit the county? And the increased property taxes spread out over, you know, thirty years are kind of inconsequential, but if there's a monthly register, you know, based on the output of the site, that could become a revenue stream for the county, I think that's worth looking at.
I would encourage that as well. We want to, as hopefully you see, we want to be good neighbors. We want to participate in the county's economics and flow that to the county. I would encourage you to look next door at Hanover County. They just went through two years of developing their solar ordinance, kind of on the tails of what you guys did. And they spent a lot of time looking at the finance piece of it. There are two options for solar projects, so they're much more experts on exactly how they looked at that from a county perspective than I am, but just, it's right here next door, so a resource for you.
Mr.?
Ms. Rose.
To elaborate on that now, this is probably a discussion that took place several years ago, but if I was correctly understanding it, that the county does get a tool tax on this property when it comes in?
I'm talking about in energy. If they produce a megawatt hour, one megawatt hour, that's money, that's some portion of that that would come in the county coffers in addition to tool tax and whatever else.
But I think the only thing that we had come up with was that there was a tool tax.
So if I could add a little bit of clarification, I think we're, I think you're going, Mr. LaRochelle, those are pursuant to siding agreements, which only come into play, that's with that five megawatt and above. And because these are lower than those amounts, that siding agreement that I believe allows those kinds of taxes are not applicable for these smaller projects.
Thank you.
Madam Chair. I think that the discussions, I seem to recall, it was, it was almost a choice between the equipment tax or there was some other equation that could be applied over time. Is that my recollection correct with that?
Yeah.
And it's the county's choice on which would be more beneficial. I can't recall which one is generally more beneficial to the county, but I'd like to think we would pick the most beneficial.
Okay. This, if we can, let's, all these questions are very important, but what we're trying to do is get some additional conditions or refinement to the conditions of this proposal so that we can bring it to a close. But I understand your concern and your outspokenness on these other items, but let's continue on that, please. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question for clarification. Ms. Townsend started with it, I think it was her number one, and then I think Mr. Mosby made a reference to it. And that is grading and graveling the road. To go back to the picture here, if residents use that road, will that be graded, will it be graded and gravelled before you begin?
So Reverend, I believe that the way you framed it earlier is exactly right. We are, we will go ahead and make sure that it is to a good standard, which we're happy to make sure we comply with what that, you know, put that into numbers and cents with staff before, I mean, we need to do that for the trucks. They can't, you know, we're talking about tractor-trailers, not logging equipment, so they need, they're not four-by-fours, right? So we need to do that before the construction starts and then, and then obviously return it to that same standard at the end of construction to Ms. Townsend's recommended condition. We're happy to add that in. I would just ask that we limit it to the construction piece and not the operations because obviously there's going to be logging and other activities that are outside of the project's control. After the construction period is over, we will not have heavy traffic there, with the exception of, like you, somebody mentioned, decommissioning, we may, we could put that in as a condition, again, at the end of life, to do similar sort of before and after standard, if you will. Very amiable, sir.
Ms. Rose?
Yes. Along those lines, just a point of clarification. Everybody's been talking about before and after. What about during?
During the operations period?
No, during the construction.
Oh, absolutely.
Which is going to be about a year.
Yeah, just happy to clarify that as well. The construction is anticipated to be about six months. There's really three months from a noise and that sort of perspective from the neighbors, is really about three months of like peak activity, of which about half of that is the pile driving. That's really the only real noise that you hear is the pounding of the piles into the ground. But these projects go up very fast and then the back half of the project is really all the electrical piece, which takes a bit of time, but is very quiet, obviously. So really, we're talking about, you know, six-ish weeks or so of the pile driving where, and that will, you'll see much of the truck traffic coming to get all the materials there and then the pile driving is the very first thing that will happen. After that, you know, this will again be behind that minimum fifty-foot, if not more, of vegetation, I won't use the D-word here, that it really be out of sight, out of mind and that that will be our, what we'll strive to do.
Any other informal discussion? Still looking for a motion. While I wait for a motion, Ms. Townsend, if you wouldn't mind, look at condition number three in the overall analysis recommendation, recommended draft of conditions and see if a modification of that would not maybe provide some comfort to you regarding site maintenance, a well-balanced side of the site. While she reads, is there any other questions or informal discussion?
So the administrative inspections, do we need to clarify that we're looking at the BMPs and/or are we just going to lead it as administrative inspections?
I, I'm going to say something and then I'll let you change that, sir. I believe if you want to add some words to what that administrative inspections includes, that's fine. I think the BMP maintenance agreement, that all sites do engage or encounter with any site development would cover any kind of BMP maintenance and the protocols of maintaining those things throughout their life. But I think this specific may be adjusted somehow to be a little more specific to what your cares and desires are regarding the grounds maintenance and good housekeeping of the general land. So I think the BMPs are covered, basically. It's more the housekeeping of the general land. Did I do that right? Fair enough?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So the separate condition for the BMP form agreement is condition twelve. This condition, condition three, regards to compliance with the requirements of the conditional use permit. There'll be some overlap there, obviously, because one of the conditions of the conditional use permit is that they must enter the BMP and there's some other ones, too, but, so I think this one's a little bit more general.
So the word, I don't know what the word we're looking for, other than I like the word you used, it's good housekeeping.
A site inspection. Is that a site inspection? Considered a mystery, inside inspection by New Kent County?
But, um...
Yes, Ms. Chair.
The thing, I guess I'm concerned about is if we don't put the right meets and bounds on it, I mean, we can be creating this very nebulous thing.
Sure.
With it, without really having any teeth to it. Could it be, I wouldn't mind, I wouldn't mind seeing a condition if it's allowed to specify, there can be no accumulation of materials, you know, whether it's, it's... there, there can be no accumulation of, of materials, uh, you know, whether, whether it's, uh, it's.
Discovered materials.
Discard, discarded materials, wa- waste, uh, work. They, they shouldn't be stockpiling, uh, uh, new, new equipment. I, I mean, I'm assuming a- any, any repairs or replacement, it would be on time delivery. They're, they're not going to be, have, have storage of, of, of materials used or otherwise.
I'm sure that that would be consumed rather quickly, because the panels, you don't want them sitting on the ground because of the chance of breaking.
Well.
But what if we said just free from debris? Uh, so that would mean that, you know, if they cleaned up a bunch of sticks and just left a pile of logs left, they need to maintain it. Again, it's good housekeeping.
Don't get losing the ways.
Yes.
Waste, discarded materials.
I worry that this runs a little bit of foul or ill-adrenal authority, uh, to, to put conditions on this property. So, um, there is a provision in Title fifteen-two of the RDU code that allows localities to adopt a club of ordinance, um, by ordinance. We do not have one, and I think this may be sort of a runaround to get there. And I, I just, I just, I don't know that that's, that's a power that we can exercise. I think.
That we, we need to adopt a, a, an ordinance, an ordinance, ordinance. We can't, we can't just put it into a CUP.
So even with the inspection of the site, are we still doing?
So we can inspect the site for compliance with the conditional use permit and all the other conditions?
But if the conditional use.
And the mechanism is, I think, I think at root here is that private property owners, without any ill-adrenal authority to, to, to regulate otherwise, have a right to, better or worse, store things on their property, especially in an agricultural use where you see people doing that.
Right down the street from me.
I mean, maybe I offer a, a, a way to get it in without throwing a valve. I hope what, uh, was just mentioned there, um, oftentimes we, um, are required to submit a vegetation management plan from other counties. Um, and so happy to do that here, it's not a requirement in Kent County, but we have, these are, you know, what we follow anyway. And we can put in there that we will keep the, the, uh, housekeeping of the site. So maybe to ensure there's no debris of, uh, used material, things like that. Um, and we will have the staff to put that in there, so it doesn't have to be a requirement that we put on us, but we'll take it on ourselves.
Can we just?
Is that acceptable? And would we be, we'll call it a vegetation management plan?
Yes, ma'am.
This is just a question, but couldn't we just have it where, when the site inspection is done, if there's anything out of place from the, from the initial plot, that it's in violation and we charge a fine for it?
Probably too broad.
Well, I mean, there's, there's a site plan, and it, there's, we know exactly where every one of these solar panels is going to be, where their substation will be. I mean, we can just.
I believe the remedy when the applicant, then later on gets, uh, a permit, especially a use permit with these conditions, the remedy for the county is then the full permit.
And then have to go to the decommission plan after that, right?
I, I don't know that we have a method to provide to that.
We gotta make money somehow.
Thank you for all your comments or in discussion. Do I have a motion? Yes, sir.
Clarify the conditions that we have arrived in mind. I believe Reverend Hathaway requested pile driving could only happen Monday to Friday. I believe that Ms. Townsend had asked that there be a condition that the road be maintained during the life of the project. For like the construction.
And decommission.
Um, and then I believe the remaining element of the inspection of the property was covered by.
The vegetation management plan? Would that be in there or?
Increase to submit a, a management plan. And the applicant will submit a vegetation management plan that is acceptable to the planning department.
And we're clear that we're talking about grading and graveling the road from the beginning. Before it starts. I think, I think the applicant answered it earlier. I want to make sure it gets incorporated.
Yes, sir. So I think, uh, the attorney had mentioned that that's the second condition. So, condition one was Monday to Friday of the pile driving. Condition two was to ensure that the entry road was brought up to standards of degree upon maintaining there during construction and also be conditional. And then that, uh, number three is submission of a vegetation management plan to the satisfaction.
Okay, that's good. Do we have a motion?
Mister Bennett, before we start.
Yes, ma'am.
You did it so eloquently last time. You would explain to our board members the purpose of voting, not because it's something that we, we want, but it's a, it's a matter of whether something fits in our comprehensive plan. Uh, you did that really well. Um, I just want to make sure that everybody understands it's not necessarily what comes in.
Sure.
You may not like it, but it does fit.
If I remember what I wrote. No, that's not what I wrote, I'm sorry. Um, we are charged at looking at those gray areas on land use that are not completely identified in our zoning documents and, and, and make judgments on that, them as it compares to the comprehensive plan. It's more of a yes and no than it is a feel-good item. So we need to focus on land use, not so much as to, I don't like it there. So with that being said, our focus, our charge, as we are appointed by the board, is on land use decisions only, not political decisions.
Mr. Chairman, I did actually prepare comments similar to that myself, so.
Be my guest, since I was unprepared. Thank you.
Um, yeah, for me, in, in addition to due diligence for surrounding property owners, the property owner of the parcel in question also has to be considered as well. Um, we all want to be able to use our property as allowed by current zoning. Um, while it not a by right use, this is a case where the use is allowed if meeting all of the conditional use requirements, including each specific development standards we incorporated into the county code in twenty twenty-two for solar farms. Uh, tonight, and as I previously mentioned regarding a prior solar farm CUP application, I recognize and appreciate we have citizens who may not agree with solar farms in New Kent. But I feel as a commissioner, I have to vote on land, a land use issue based on what is allowed by state and local law. Um, as of today, solar farms are allowed, and I believe the applicant hasn't met their burden with the application. Um, I will also say approval of this C, CUP is based on the application before us, and I cannot say that all or any future CUP applications will meet our development or conditional use standards either.
Thank you very much, sir. Yes, Reverend Hathaway.
I think the code also says for every legal use, there must be a place in the county for that. And solar farms are legal use, and whether we like it or not, there must be a place for that in the county.
Final remark I have, if, we have before us a site that came under our decision that was more, I would say more, a little more appropriate as it was zone industrial. But there was some, those are few and far between in the county. So if a, if a site in Brent brought before us and duly considered, where are they going to go? We're going to have to have them somewhere, some shape, some form. So I would say just remember that we're not necessarily fighting uphill battle, but we have to consider that we have landlord rights here, and we have to make sure that we're looking forward into the county to meet those power needs that the county's going to require in the future. So if not here, where? Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Mister Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
In order to address, protect, and promote public needs, necessity, general welfare, and good zoning practices in the county, I move to adopt the resolution number PC zero one two four to board the application CUP oh three two three to the New Kent County Board of Supervisors with available recommendation. And if I could, I'd like to ask our county attorney.
If he would read the following conditions that would be placed in this?
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. I believe where we settled on was an adoption of all the conditions as they currently exist, as proposed by the applicant, with the addition of the following three. Uh, that the road must be maintained up to county standards during construction and during decommissioning. Um, that pile driving will only occur between Monday and Friday, and then a vegetation management plan will be submitted if it is accept, and, uh, that is acceptable to the county.
Thank you. I further move that the planning commission finds this project to be within substantial accord with the comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mister LaRochelle?
Aye.
Mister Moyer?
Upstain.
Miss Rose?
Aye.
Doctor Schmidt?
Aye.
Miss Johnson?
Aye.
Mister Dumbraskey?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Mister Davis?
Aye.
Reverend Hathaway?
Aye.
Mister Bennett?
Aye. One more, one more moment here. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, Mister Moyer, your absten- abstention is because you'll be voting on this at the Board of Supervisors level. Thank you, sir. We're going to, if there's no disagreement bound, the commissioners will take a five or so minute break, please. Let's try to reconvene at eight-thirty or just after.
Five-minute recess.
We wore out the microphone. Killed it.
I love you. You look like somebody in a script. Ah. This is okay.
Presenting. Okay. Good to meet you. Utility plate.
Okay, so.
I appreciate it.
Yeah. I, I would, I would, but it is, I got the three.
Is that really a call?
I have to work, I have to work.
That's true.
I just think for a day. And I started.
Right. First time on my.
I do have a question.
Oh, you're good. That's what I care for. And. I have a question. 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 If you, if you would have your seats, please. If you'd like to have your seats, please. I'll reconvene the planning commission meeting. Going to move along, I think, Ms. Rose, you're up again for capital improvement plan.
I will open the public hearing for the Capital Improvement Program Resolution PC-02-24. Mr. Hathaway?
Thank you, members of the planning commission. First, I'd like to start off, do our new members have the capital improvement plan packets? Good, thank you. This, okay, good. All right.
Some, some pages can be small, but you just dive into it, you'll be okay.
Well, actually.
I saw the online version, too, so that makes me.
Well, no, actually, in the packet that I printed out, I have an insert, and I'll make sure each of you get the insert, which is a much larger version.
It's not a problem, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you. This afternoon, you have before you PC-02-04, which consists of the fiscal year 2025 through 2029 draft capital improvements plan. Capital improvements Program is a five-year planning tool that is used by the county to predict and plan for upcoming capital expenditures. Section 15.2-2239 of the Code of Virginia states that at the direction of the governing body, the planning commission shall prepare and revise annually a capital improvement program based on the comprehensive plan of the locality for a period not to exceed five years, which is the reason we are here today. The plan before you, again, covers fiscal years 2025 through 2029 and includes projects And that's all the plans over the five-year period. To dial that down a little bit, for FY25, which is the next fiscal year, beginning July 1, I am proposing plans totaling $9,446,440. And I went over those projects in detail at our last meeting, so I won't do that tonight, but I'll be happy to answer any questions if, if you have any. Also want to bring your attention to page, well, on top of that, that's just for capital projects that are funded through our capital improvement plan, which essentially comes from our operating budget. The county does have a separate capital improvement plan, and that comes from our Public Utilities Fund, which is a separate fund, and we separate them because one is tax-supported and one is not. Our Public Utilities Fund is supported solely through user fees and connection fees. The utility capital improvements plan, which is the last plan, last page of the spreadsheet, totals $10,154,800. You'll also find in the booklet on page 13 a list of proposed fee changes. Each year, I ask my department heads to review their fees and to make sure they're consistent with our cost of providing those services and also consistent with the market and our neighboring localities as, as well. We do have proposed fee changes for our airport. There's various fees there, and that's just really a market adjustment, but even with those fee changes, we're still one of the cheapest airports in the region. And actually, we're full right now. We don't have any other hangar space available, which is the reason in our capital improvements program, you'll find a project where we are working towards building additional hangars. It's my goal, and we're almost there, it's my goal that the airport will be totally self-sufficient. And we're almost there, but in order to achieve that, we need more hangars, because that's what bring in revenue at the airport. There are also some building permit fees as it relates to missed, missed inspections. Missed inspections is when a contractor schedules an inspection with us, and we get there, and they're not ready for the inspection. Contractors will do this as a way to kind of stay on schedule. They'll schedule their inspections weeks out, but they don't always hold up their end of the bargain. So if we have to come out and you're not ready for the inspection, you're taking services away from another contractor that could be ready and, and waiting. So we are proposing to increase our fee for that, really to discourage contractors calling in inspections when they're not ready. There are also some proposed changes as it relates to amusement devices. You know, New Kent does not have an amusement park, but we do do a good number of inspections for inflatables and other carnivals and events that happen around the county throughout the year. And then you'll find on page 14, proposed public safety fee increases, and really what drives the, the proposed fees on this is the insurance companies. They tell us each year how much we can bill for services, and we try to match our fees I believe, I'll be happy to answer any questions at this time. You do have the resolution before you, and I understand, since we do have some new members, too, if you're not ready to take action tonight, that, that's fine. I do ask that we conduct the public hearing if that's the case, but if you feel more comfortable convening at your next meeting to take action, that does not throw off our schedule as far as the actual budget process. I will be presenting the entire budget, which we're working on now, to the Board of Supervisors at their March regular meeting. So we, we have some time. Thank you.
Mr. Kim? As a discussion, Mr. Hathaway, first, I want to say that putting this information together, I know is a task, and every year, you seem to be able to pull it off. So I would like to say thank you to you, your staff, all the county employees that put their two cents in. Done a great job, and you've always been on task. Now, I only had one question in regards to the mount, and I believe we, we've talked about this, but under the building inspections, you have under here small mechanical inflatables. So as we discussed, it's the permit would go up to $55. So is that per event, or is that per inflatable? Well, will they have to have permits for each inflatable that comes in, such as, I'm thinking of the county fair, you know, sometimes they have about four or five of them. So is that five permits to be inspected?
That is a really good question that I will have to follow up on, unless our planning staff may know. Because I'm not sure, I know we have to do individual inspections on each item.
No. Well, if fee changes are.
Page 13. We have to do individual inspections on each item, but I'm not sure if we bill for each individual item. I will follow up with you on that. That's a great question. I know at the farmer's market, we have an inflatable there, but we only have one piece of equipment. We've paid for, and the county does pay for our own inspections, too. We've paid for one inspection, and that inspection last gave us a permit for the entire season. But if we had two inflatables, I'm not sure if we would still pay the one in permit fee or if we would have to pay for two. So I, I will find that answer out.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, a question. So, Mr. Hathaway, so I just, it's a general question. So if it doesn't make it into your budget, you know, as far as the CIP is cut from FY25, does it automatically roll over into FY26, or is it just wait till next year? If, if you make the cut or?
Most likely, it will. Now, I mean, there are instances where things have been asked, where I just have not agreed with, and we removed that from the plan, because we truly use this plan as a planning document, even though it might be an item that we can't afford right now. Usually, those items are rolled over to future years, and we develop a plan to eventually get there. But if it's an item that I just don't think is right for the county, then usually those projects are removed from, from.
Now, are they placed in, so this year, if something that, let's say you strike in this year, do you just decide when that's, and will it be reflected, I guess, in, at the end of the day?
Yeah. On, on, on the spreadsheet, there's a column for each year, each of the five years. And I mean, we have had instances where we've reviewed something, and we've pushed it out a year, because we just didn't think the finances were there to, to fund it. So we, we will push things out.
Right. And I know, and obviously, it's no guarantee that next year it'll be, because things change, too.
Right, but you know, as long as it's in the plan, we're going to be working to, to get there. Now, there, there are a couple of items, and speaking of that, that we kept in FY25, but we've not put any money on it. And those are three school projects. The schools have requested the construction of a new elementary school, the construction of a turf field at the athletic complex, and an expansion of, of the middle school. Because those projects are so expensive, I believe it's about $61.5 million. That's not projects that we would fund out of our capital improvement program. Those would be debt service projects. We would have to borrow money, which comes right from our operating, and that's what we're looking at now while we're planning our budget for next fiscal year. So we haven't said no to that, because we've just started our operating budget, but it's, it's something we're working on.
And in a general sense, I know it's hard to predict or project, there's a lot of costs that's, even from today, it's unknown that what we're going to spend three or four budget years away, but some things, like we want big item projects, like the, you know, water intake on the Pumunki or the location of a school site, so you don't know what you're going to pay for a piece of land yet, but I mean, how does that work in, or are we always in the market for that piece of land? Now, we, we have a general area, so I guess we wouldn't commit to it.
Yeah, the, the, the way we do this is, especially those projects in the out years, we use our best guess, the information that we have available. We know what market rates are now and construction rates, and, and we'll apply an inflator to that. And then, when we start looking at, when we get to that fiscal year, then we fine-tune it. Like, there's some projects that are being proposed for FY25 in this that have been on the plan for four or five years. And since we're now really looking at our FY25 expenditures, we've fine-tuned those, those numbers. So it is a bit of a guess, an educated guess, but for the next fiscal year, we do fine-tune that, that number. And we use, and we have on-call engineering firms, and we use their services for cost estimates.
Thank you, and I welcome, Ms. Townsend, we do appreciate all the work that you've done and staff do all the time, so we know it's a lot goes into this.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, question I have, sir, on the airport.
Yes.
May sound like a silly question. Where full occupancy, are they being used for aviation purposes? Are people using these hangars for storage or other things, or is it all aircraft?
It's, it's, it's all aircraft, because of the demand. We don't allow people to use hangars for anything else. Now, let me back that up a little bit, because there are one, there, there is one hangar there where we're actually using, the county is using for our lawn maintenance equipment. We have a tractor there to maintain the airport. And there is another large hangar at the airport that's connected to the terminal building that is the maintenance shop. So we don't store aircraft there, but we repair them there.
So I, I guess I'm happy to hear that, that the airspace above our airport is kind of restricted because of proximity to Richmond, so it's not ideal for private pilots, because they have to comply with different airspace restrictions, but it's great that it's, that you have that occupancy.
Well, and that, that's one of the attractions to New Kent. It is restricted, but it's not as restricted as the Richmond space. So pilots like the lesser restrictions here, yeah.
Madam Chair, one question for Mr. Hathaway. Actually, a couple. Talking to my colleague here, there was, there's about 8.6 billion for Route 1062 in Lebanon, and there's about 4 million for the improvements on the roundabout at Route 155 courthouse. Wait, those are the county's complements to whatever, whatever other funding that would be needed to complete those?
We, we anticipate that all of that funding will come from state and federal sources. We have, and, and regional as, as well. We have several applications in right now to, to fund that project. No county funding right now is anticipated for those, but the reason we put that project in, as well as some of the other projects in there, is when we're negotiating proffers, the language is very clear that proffers are to be items that are in your comprehensive plan. So by having that in our comprehensive plan, it gives us the ability to negotiate proffers for those.
Then the other question is regarding the, I pronounce this wrong all the time, Warren High Community Center?
Yes, yes.
And I'm not sure, it may be just a best guess, but I think it's like 1.9, 1.8 million for that. Now, just see, well, that may be just enough, and then I see where it may not be enough.
Yeah.
So my, my engineering's saying, are there turn lanes going to be here? Are there road improvements coming? We're going to have to cook up, hook up the water sewer things. It is going there at the park, right?
It is. The, the plan is to put that at the park. There is enough land there out of the RPA and, and all of that. We're planning for a 4,000-square-foot facility there. This is a project I'm actually excited about, because in the east end of the county, there is no community gathering space anywhere that, that's public in, in the county. And we know from experience, our Quinton Community Center in the western portion of the county, it stays booked. So we think that this is a need. We're hoping that that 1.88 will, will be sufficient. We've had an engineer look at it, and they've given us a breakdown on their estimate for site work, for construction, et cetera. So we, we believe that 1.8 will be sufficient.
And there was some monies identified for McKinney Woods, I think, for field creations or something like that, that I saw, but I, I can't remember if that was out long in three years from now, four years from now?
Well, speaking of pushing projects out, that was a project that, that was requested for next fiscal year. I'm recommending that we push that project out, only because I think, you know, we have a new board member representing that district. We want to work with the community to see what their vision is for McKinney Woods, and we want to develop a vision and plan first before we start spending money. So that's why I've pushed it out a year.
Thank you very much, sir.
Mr. Hathaway, is, would there be options for, I guess, community commissions on that to kind of look into, get that, hey, how would you arrive the input from the citizens for that, for something like that?
Well, I don't want to steal the thunder from my board member representing that, that district. I believe she would be very open for a community commission, but we've not yet put a plan in place. I'm taking notes.
Any other questions for Mr. Hathaway? Considering you, you had, you had mentioned, is there, is there any, are there any outstanding questions, concerns, or just information gathering that anyone would like to see before we, we actually move the public hearing forward tonight? Seeing none, then we'll, we'll continue with the public hearing.
Okay.
Let the record show, no, no, no public commenters, so I will close the public hearing and turn it back to you. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you very much, Ms. Rose. Well, Commissioners, I will entertain a motion if you have one. Or we can go into informal discussion, but seems like this is pretty...
Mr. Chairman, I had a question with Mr. Hathaway, who he's going to return, check into it. However, I would be open to the fact is that if you maybe looked at this, that, and you've got the results, perhaps underneath it, you can put a little asterisk and say that this is per event, or this is per, you know, just sort of to break that down a little bit so that we get a better understanding, because I don't want to hold up our vote tonight based on this. But just for clarification, maybe some notes right at the bottom of there.
Okay, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. Will you entertain that motion? Don't be shy, new members. I'll pick on you folks.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Absolutely, Dr. Schmidt, thank you.
In order to address, protect, and promote public convenience necessity, general welfare, and good zoning practices in the county, I move to adopt Resolution PC dash zero-two dash twenty-four to forward the capital improvements program FY two-zero-two-five through FY two-zero-two-nine to the New Kent County Board Supervisors with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. The motion's for a favorable recommendation, Ms. Berry, call of members.
Mr. LaRochelle?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Upstain.
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Reverend Hathaway?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Ms. Berry.
Thank you.
Well, item number ten is new business. I rely on Ms. Ladue for that, and there is none, she shakes her head. Pass along to Chairman's report, which I have none, Plan RBA report. No, that's, we don't, well, as I remember, as I remember, there usually is not a meeting in January, okay? So there, there's not a, Commissioners' report, and we'll start with, so we can build up the courage in our new members, we'll start with, Mr. LaRochelle, do you have any Commissioners' report individually?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Rose?
Nothing to report.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend.
Yes, perhaps we'll discuss the road transportation issues at Dispatch and two forty-nine. And I'm going to pass that over to our colleague, Mr. Moyer.
I'll get to it in a minute, okay? Thank you, Ms. Townsend. Dr. Schmidt?
Nothing.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll leave you next to last, if you don't mind, sir. Mr. Moyer?
What Ms. Townsend's talking about is, last we got the opportunity to attend the Transportation Safety Commission meeting, and one of the things that was brought up was, by me, was the possibility of a roundabout at Dispatch and two forty-nine, because I have never left a planning commission meeting without hearing about that. And since I got quote-unquote elevated to a position where I might be able to do a little more about it, I made sure I brought it up, and they were very willing, the VDOT was very willing to look at possibly having a roundabout study for that, which, you know, if we can get anything there more than what we have, will be of a large benefit. They also, also was brought up, not by me, but other people, also at NPEC and two forty-nine, due to the fact, the amount of traffic that has accumulated because of the new school. So that's my report on that. The other thing, Rodney's not here, but Rodney, myself, John Lockwood, Amy Pearson, we attended the transportation meeting today of the state, and it was, it was, one of the things that was brought up was the naming of the gap of the, of I sixty-four, the twenty-nine miles between James City County and Enrico, and naming that, Ms. Patricia Page Memorial Highway. And the Department of Transportation, the Secretary of Transportation could barely get the wording out. He was so moved by, by what had Ms. Page has done and what, what it means to get this forward, that he asked for an affirmation of this from the board, and they all stood in silence for about ten seconds. It was, it was amazing, and, you know, we all thanked him, thanked him, and we were on our way. But I know we've talked about that, I know the board talked about it, and the last board put the, put the recommendation into VDOT and the Department of Transportation, but it's official now. So it's very appropriate, and, you know, it's, I feel, you know, a little let out that, that I didn't get to work with Ms. Page, but at least we have, we'll have a reminder every time we're on sixty-four.
Thank you, Mr. Moyer. Now to the new members, new members, Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Anything that you think? I have.
Thank you, just wanted to give you an opportunity.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr.?
As we go.
Fantastic. We'll enjoy your input. Mr. Dombrowski?
I have nothing to comment other than thank you, and I'm excited to serve with all of you as we, as we move forward and continue to make decisions.
Thank you very much, sir, welcome. And Reverend Hathaway, sir.
I did to all this, been said, I'm happy to be here. I'm especially excited that that stretch of highway will be named for Mrs. Page. I've worked closely with her for four decades, and to see that honor, I know she's smiling.
Here, here. Thank you, sir. Staff reports. Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, I'm sorry. Yes, I did skip him, I'm sorry. Mr. Davis, he's got important stuff.
That was a Freudian slip, wasn't it?
Yes, it was. I told you he'd be last.
My annual, or not annual, monthly update.
Okay, thank you.
For the New Kent Comp Plan Update Committee, for the new members to which I chair, and so we're, and so we're looking forward to even input that you may have into the process as well, coming on as new members. Did our normally monthly Zoom meeting with EPR and staff on December twentieth. We did discuss some land use revisions based on the map. I know Kelly has put in a lot of work on kind of updating that for EPR staff to have the correct information to work with, so thanks to Kelly for that. Also, this, more of this focus is now on transportation needs, transportation issues, so, and again, that was a great part of the discussion. Our next full committee meeting is scheduled for January twenty-fifth at two P M. And note, Mr. Moyer, who was on the committee, has resigned for, we like to think obvious reasons, he's moved on to bigger and better things, but he did appoint a replacement, Pete Stipe will be his replacement. Sweet, I'm sorry, and I have sweet here in my notes. I know of Pete Stipe. So Pete Sweet is his replacement, and I don't know if he is aware of the meeting, he is, okay. So, other than that, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Davis. Yes, Ms. Ladue, sorry to interrupt you.
It is okay. So for February's meeting, we do have one home occupation CUP, similar to a commercial dog training facility we did last year or the year before. It's another gentleman up on Hopewell Road who wants to train dogs at his home. And then the bylaw adoption with the changes. I also included in your packet the annual report to the board. It's the same format as what we've used in previous years, just synopses of each meeting, any action that was taken on public hearings, a little bit of demographic info about COs and population, the attendance, and then on the back, we put the last three years of applications that our department has processed. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them, otherwise, I'd appreciate a motion to pass this to the board supervisors.
Any questions from Ms. Ladue? Do I have a motion?
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Rose?
I move to forward the two thousand and twenty-three annual staff report to the board of supervisors.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. Wrong call, please.
Mr. LaRochelle?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Upstain.
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Reverend Hathaway?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye. Thank you, Ms. Berry.
Thank you.
The next regularly scheduled meeting for the New Kent County Planning Commission will be Tuesday, February twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four, at eight, I mean, six thirty P M., and less weather interferes. If there's no further business, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I would, Mr. Chairman, for everybody headed home, just be careful, it's going to be cold, ice, things like that, so pay attention.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. We are adjourned, it's nine oh four P M.